All right. Morning. My name's Anthony Coghill. I'm city councilperson for the fourth city council district. Also Chair of Public Works, and that's who we have with us today. We also have Madam President Teresa Kiel Smith joining us, Councilman Bobby Wilson, and I'm not sure if any others are online. Is there, how would I tell that?
No one else online.
Okay. So it would just be the three of us for now, and with that, I will turn it over to our Budget Director, Mr. Urbainik, to give us a quick run through.
Thank you Chairman Coghill. Today, we have the Department of Public Works, and their mission is to maintain the city's assets related to parks, facilities, rehabilitating public structures, providing support to other departments, to administer a solid waste and recycling system that promotes a litter-free environment, and to ensure public safety responding to weather-related events. The Department of Public Works is separated into four separate bureaus: The Bureau of Administration, the Bureau of Environmental Services, Bureau of Operations, and the Bureau of Facilities. The budgetary highlights for this year: Total budget for DPW bureaus is $63,490,000. It's an increase of $4 million, or 7%. The Department of Public Works generates a number of general fund revenues. Some of these revenues have been transferred to DOMI, but within the budget document, DPW revenues include the Liquid Fuels Funds. Budgeted for this year is $4,072,000. I think there may be an error in the budget. It said the budget for the 2021 was $6 million, so I do have a question for our folks on that. I don't know if DPW can answer that, or if that's more of an OMB question. Salaries and benefits, RAD reimbursement, approximately $158,000. Picnic and Ball Field revenue generates, is supposed to generate $329,500,000 this year. And we'll skip the miscellaneous and the others, but maintenance, that's equalization payment for the city-county buildings, money we get from the county, $600,000. Refuge dumpster fees, $57,000. Demolition dumpster, $25,000. Commonwealth recycling grant is slated to be revenue of $315,000 this year. And then, of course, the town of Wilkinsburg. We have a trash collection agreement with them that will generate approximately $961,000 this year, and that's contractual. We'll start off with the, turn to the next page. We'll go to the Bureau of Administration, total budget $1.4 million. Increase of $320,000, or 28%. Total full-time positions, 17, the same as amended in the 2021 budget. Position and salary changes include Operations Coordinator was eliminated. A Secretary was eliminated. Communication Specialist transferred from Facilities, $55,000. Constituent Service Coordinator transferred from City Planning, $52,000. Non-salary subclasses increased by a combination of $8,600. Some travel was, and training, workforce training was restored to $6,000. Office supplies increased by $2,600, as anticipated in the 2021 five-year plan. And that's the Bureau of Administrations. The, if you turn to the next page, you'll get to the Bureau of Operations, where a lot of the work in the communities takes place. Total budgets, $22,995,000, approximately $23 million. There's an increase of 1.174 million, an extra 5.4%. Total full-time positions are 263, that's a decrease of 5. Position changes, highlights include Administrator to permit, Administrator to permits eliminated. Foreman increase from 14 to 15. Tree pruners increase from 8 to 10. One of four skilled laborers has been eliminated. Salary changes include Superintendent's increase from 29F to 31E. That's a $6,800 total increase. Six maintenance supervisors increased from 25E to 2070. $29,500 total increase. One maintenance supervisor increase from 26G to 29E, a $3,300 increase. Forrester was also increased from 26F to a 29E, or a $6,800 increase. Positions transferred elsewhere include Survey Party Chief, Assistant Land Survey Rod Specialist transferred to DOMI. Operations Manager transferred to the Parks Trust Fund. Three General Laborers transferred to DPW facilities. Non-salary subclasses changed across seven lines for a total increase of $64,000. The big one here is, the ones here are Cleaning was increased by $307,000, and Landscaping was increased by $300,000. Also Machinery Equipment increased by $100,000. Parks Maintenance Equipment still less than the pre-pandemic is $245,000. Skip over to the next page, which would be the Bureau of Environmental Services. The total budget for the Bureau of Environmental Services, $17,674,000. A decrease of $39,000. Total full-time positions are 180. There is an increase of 1. Salary and position changes include Project Coordinator added to $57,000. Additional Anti-Litter Inspector was added at $52,680. Existing Anti-Litter Specialist promoted to an Anti-Litter Inspector. $13,553 increase. Recycling Supervisor was increased from an 18G to a 25E. That's also a $13,500 increase. Superintendent and two Refuge Collection Supervisors both increased by $2,720. Program Supervisor increased by one pay rate, or $2,700. There's no changes to number of drivers, 50 co-drivers, 76, or loaders, there's 24. Non-salary subclasses changed across five different line items for a total decrease of $500,000. Disposal refuse increased by close to 500,000. Prevention, $70,000 moved to roll-off boxes. Maintenance reduced by $15,000, and operations supplies were increased by $11,784. Environmental Services Trust Fund is under the Department of Environmental Services. That's the Solid Waste Trust Fund. Project Beginning Balance was $842, similar last year, but down $250,000 from 2018. The anticipated revenue in 2022 is $50,000, more than double last year's budget of 20, but less than a tenth of what it was a decade ago. Same changes there. Next, we'll skip off to the Department and Bureau of Facilities within the Department of Public Works. The total budget for Bureau of Facilities is $21,348,000. It's an increase of 2.6 million, or 14%. Total full-time positions are 89, it's a decrease of 1. Position changes of note, Senior Project Manager has been downgraded to an Associate Project Manager, $27,000 savings. One of two construction foremen were eliminated at $67,000 savings. Program Coordinator, three eliminated, $57,000. And two cement finishers were added at $54,000 each. One truck driver was also added. Salary changes, Superintendent increased from 29E to 31E. $6,900 total increase. Construction Supervisor was increased from the 25G to the 29E, or a $6,800 increase. Positions that were transferred, a lot of moving around here within the department's. Aquatics Foreman was transferred to the Parks Trust Fund. Communication Specialist transferred to DPW Administration. Three skilled laborers transferred to the Parks Tax Trust Fund. And three General Laborers transferred from DPW Operations. Non-salary subclasses changed across 10 line items, or a total increase of 1.7 million. The big ones here, Land of Buildings, increased by $496,000. Maintenance increased by $334,000. These increases were previously scheduled to happen. The ARP restoration did not happen until half of the construction season was half completed. The 2022 budget reflects the ongoing cost of maintenance. Water is increased by $500,000, as anticipated in the 2021 five-year plan. PUC and PWSA. We're going to see another half a million dollar increase in 2023 from the PWSA as we begin to, the municipality begins to pay for its water. Electric also increased by $297,000, as also is anticipated in 2021 five-year plan. Materials increased $105,000 for interior renovations of building, as also anticipated in the plan. Bureau of Facilities has no trust funds. The Facilities Trust Fund is actually housed in OMB, and as of last month, had a balance of $136,000. With that, I think I covered all the departments, yes. And on the back, we have the different trust funds that will also be listed in the budget. The Regional Asset District Trust Fund, the ARAD Public Works Trust Fund. Projected Beginning Balance is $770,000. Anticipated revenue in 2022 is 5.1 million, the same as 2021. And that a increase of three positions within the trust fund. Two tractor operators were added. Two labors were added, and one skilled laborer was eliminated. The Parks, the, excuse me, the ARAD Trust Fund. Fund 68 positions that are dedicated towards park maintenance within our regional parks. Public Works Trust Fund is another one. The projected beginning balance, $1.5 million. Anticipated 2022 revenue is $1 million, same as prior years. J-Tree Trust Fund, projected beginning balance $374,000, and anticipated another $100,000 in revenue coming up. Wayfinders Trust Fund, that's the signage trust fund, puts signs around the city. Projected balance is $310,000. Liquid Fuels Trust Fund, projected beginning balance $10,000. Anticipated revenue, which I'm going to question again, 2022 of $8 million. A project increase, a projected increase of $117,000. Korean War Veterans Memorial, current balance is negative. We also have the Open Space Trust Fund, which is actually overseen by City Planning, but which the DPW may utilize. There's a $91,000 balance. South Side Park and Enhancement District is another one overseen by a different department, which is Public Safety, that can also be utilized by Public Works. There's a $15,000 balance. And with that, well, we're going to talk about the Parks Tax Trust Fund this afternoon, which is a new trust fund. We also have a couple other pieces of legislation which will modify the PPC, Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy Agreement, which was introduced. And we also have another piece of legislation amending the, it's going to be finalized, amending the Parks Tax Trust Fund. After this afternoon. And with that, I'm done. The only thing I'd like to comment is Marcel Newman's on the line. I just wanted to mention former city council Budget Office employee, so that's off tomorrow.
Always loyal to your team. That's, that's a nice feature. Good quality. So I just wanted, for the record, to note, Councilwoman Strasburger has joined us to continue her excellent attendance throughout the budget hearings. And I don't think I see anybody else, but. So I will turn it over to Director Hornstein for a quick preview, and then we'll open it up for questions to you, Director.
Thank you, Councilperson. Thanks, everybody, for having us. Before I kind of begin and give our overview of 2021 and our preview of 2022, I was just, Bill, to your question on the Liquid Fuels Trust Fund, because I know it's a conversation that my financial supervisor, Dave Osterman, and I've had. Dave, I wanted to invite you to speak to the Liquid Fuels Trust Fund revenue source.
Yeah, sure. I had seen that previously, and as I look at that, I'm in agreement with Bill. I think the revenue number was misprinted. The revenue number and the expenditure number as listed in the actual trust fund expenditure page should match, and they do not. The expenditure page lists the $4,072,500, which is the salary reimbursement for eligible positions to the general fund. And if you look at prior years and the future years as budgeted, it is that $4 million number, not the $6 million number.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate that clarification. So I wanted to quickly do this in 2021 review and in 2022. And, you know, my theme for today is really, it's about people, and you're going to see that in the budget, because it, you know, I think as you're all aware, it kind of takes a city to take care of itself. And so to kind of go back in time a little bit, you know, when the ARP funds became available to us, one thing it did was it allowed us to restore these positions that were cut due to COVID-19 budget restrictions. So extremely useful for us, but also, you know, that kind of gave us a mid-year opportunity to make some position changes and some hires that, you know, I believe are going to help us in the future. So a lot of what you're seeing here are some people moving around. It is not done for show. It is done with kind of thought and intent. I'm happy to answer questions on that. Because as we found out going, going through the year, you know, there were some things that, some successes that we had that kind of informed us a bit as we went through the normal budget process. And I want to highlight some of those kind of successes now. You know, we had some really great litter enforcement success stories this year. You know, we finalized what we call our Goals on Litter and Dumping Plan on through Environmental Services. You know, that enforcement's beginning to reap benefits. So we, you know, have found a way to, you know, create a positions to help us with that enforcement in the future. Additionally, we've had some really, really big volunteer efforts this year. Our Garbage Olympics was highly successful. We've had other numerous cleanup and volunteer improvement activities. So we've had, you know, well over 1,000 volunteers this year so far, and, you know, well over 3,000 hours of community service, which are strictly all from volunteers. These are on numerous cleanup and care activities throughout the city, whether it's cleaning up a neighborhood, whether it's, you know, doing work in a city park, what have you. So the addition of a communication specialist and the addition of the constituent services coordinator, really, really kind of excited about that, because it's going to help us augment, help us amplify the message to the public, and help us to generate more interest, hopefully generate more volunteerism. It's something that we value highly, that we love to support. And I know that folks in the communities are all very appreciative of those efforts. Those are some of the big things. Our recycling bin program has also been, you know, highly successful for those neighborhoods that have received the recycling bins in our central region of the city. You know, we're already seeing like almost an 11-pound increase in recycled materials. So those are things that we're continuing forward as long as with our basic core services, where we're performing maintenance, we're performing cleanup, and we're performing, you know, our construction activities. I'm happy to speak on the details of all of those. But really, it comes down to about the people. So again, as I mentioned, those are, those are some of the position hires and changes that we did to kind of move some folks around and to create some more opportunities where we can augment positions. You're seeing that with the increase in tree pruners, the increase in cement finishers, that will allow us to do more of those types of activities, which, you know, really are kind of critical, I think, in the overall scheme of what we do in Public Works. So that's kind of 2021 in review. And again, I want to really thank council for their support in that ARP budgeting process. It was really kind of critical to us to make these kind of little changes kind of on the periphery as we kind of make more improvements in coming up in 2022. So some of those things are, you know, we're always looking for incremental improvements to our service delivery across the board, whether that's in operations, whether that's in environmental services, whether that's in facilities. Or you, we're doing that with informed data and staff input. So, you know, the litter can collection sensing software has been really useful for us. We did have some problems with collection this summer, strictly staff-related, but the data actually was super helpful in us to kind of solve that problem, both temporarily, and then work with our staff internally to figure out how we're going to accomplish this going forward in the future. You know, we still, that's just one example of how we would use data and staff input to kind of like make an incremental improvement to that service to the benefit of citizens. So our staff development program, we're going to implement next year. The staff development program is, I think, one of the really critical internal things that we could do for our folks. We have a lot of really great people in the Department of Public Works. It's a great place to work, and we really felt, you know, after meeting with staff and after talking with folks, we really wanted to create opportunities for career paths, for folks to advance if they so desire. And that's across the board. That's if you're a loader, if you're a laborer, we want this resource available to you so that you know the things and steps that you can do if you want to advance into a leadership position, if you want to advance in other ways. So we're beginning that program. We're putting the final touches on that. We're going to start that program with our foreman and our Bureau of Operations. So that, again, that's something that will be communicated to all staff. It's resources that we can share. We can connect them with classes. We can collect and connect them with mentors. It's kind of a comprehensive program to help folks develop that leadership capability moving forward. And with that, I mean, that's my kind of very councilperson. That's my very simple presentation. So I am more than happy to kind of open it up to questions from our members here today.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Hornstein. And before I open it up for questions, I'll just give a brief comment myself. We meet every other week, so I'm always fully in tune as to where things are in the department, and I want to thank you for that. And that being said, you know, when Director Gable left us in the middle of winter last year, I will say I was very nervous and, you know, thinking, oh, my goodness. You know, we're in the middle of this crisis, it's plowing and everything going on in the district. But I wanted to say, to your credit, Director Hornstein, you stepped in. I feel like we did not miss a beat. And, you know, you've been everything that I would have hoped for out of a director, especially one coming in the middle of the storms that we were going through there. And I'll comment a little bit more on that later. And I also just wanted to note Marcel and your team have been fantastic. So I rely heavily on Public Works in my district, maybe because of the hills, a lot of different reasons. But, but, no, I just wanted to compliment you for the job that you've done, stepping in for Director Gable, and let everybody know you've got my complete confidence in what you do. So with that, I'll open it up. We can start with Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, Director. I just also, I also want to thank you for the work and for that you've done, stepping up to the plate when we needed somebody to step in. And I also want to point out that when you first came on board, there was a lot of disgruntled employees, and the workforce was really feeling the brunt of some discipline and maybe some over-discipline, and some, some things, not having the resources, a lot of public outcry about the jobs not being done, snow removal, on and on and on. But there was a lot of issues. And you came in and you met with the crews. And I just want to say, so that you know, the feedback that we got after you did that, the crews actually feel like you want to hold them accountable. You want the job to be done, but you also want to give them the tools necessary, and you want to give them the benefit of the doubt when necessary, or when possible. And that you really want to be fair. So I, they told me that they really have a lot of respect for you. So I just want to make sure you realize that they are saying that about you. And so whatever you did that day, I don't know what you said that made it change, or what was done. It made a lot of impact to the employees. So I just want to thank you for that, because our employees mean a lot to us. We want to see them happy. The residents want to see them happy. If they're not happy, the work's not getting done. That's, I mean, I think we've learned that lesson. If they're not happy, they're not doing the things that they, they're not going to go above and beyond. They're going to do what they have to do and go home. But with you there, they, they feel valued, so thank you very much for that. And I also want to acknowledge that Marcel Newman, I'm going to say this, both you and the Assistant Director live in Banksville, so you live in District 2. So I'm really grateful for your moving into District 2, and for Marcel staying in District 2. But I'm grateful that the administration appointed somebody that's familiar with our side of town. As you know, we have some, some issues over there as well. We border Councilman Coghill's district, and we have some of the similar challenges, especially with, you know, the snow removal and things like that. So I want to thank you for your work there. But I do have some questions. And, and I, and I know that this is a really difficult time for everybody. I want to acknowledge that. Even though there are a lot of people excited for transition, there's a lot of people sitting here waiting to see what happens with their jobs. And so I want to acknowledge that as you're anxiously awaiting to see what happens, you're also doing the work. So I want to thank you for staying focused on what needs to be done for the city of Pittsburgh. And I think whatever the future holds, I'm sure you're going to be fine, or some part of DPW in some fashion. But I noticed that there's an increase in the Wilkinsburg Trash Collection. Could you talk about that for a second?
Absolutely. The Wilkinsburg Trash Collection.
For making more, I apologize, I apologize. I thought it said there was an increase. Thanks, Bobby, for that one. Never mind, Councilman Wilson clarified that for me. But could you talk about that at all, how that's going with Wilkinsburg?
It's going okay. You know, there's some minor challenges on the periphery, mostly just getting some clarification from the Wilkinsburg Borough, where there might be discrepancies, where citizens in Wilkinsburg think that their trash should be collected, and there's discrepancies between how the borough is classifying it, the land versus the county. Not sure why or how that happened, but, you know, we're working diligently with them to kind of get that cleared up. It is a point of concern for us, but we are working through it.
Okay, thank you. And, and the changes in Environmental Services with the anti-litter is, is, do you know if Missy is still here, Missy Rosenfeld?
Yes, she is.
Now, is she in charge of that department, or is she now reporting to somebody?
You know, that kind of works with the recycling supervisor and kind of whole anti-litter team that we're developing down there, so.
I know that we hired somebody new, and he's great, I want to say that, Chris. He is great. But I didn't know if her position changed, and now is she reporting to him, or is he reporting to her? I'm just curious of that chain of command.
We'll clarify that with her. I don't have it right necessarily right in front of me.
Could you, whatever it is, because I'd like to know.
Absolutely, absolutely.
She did a great job building that program up, and I want to make sure she's, you know, valued in all the work that she's done. She's done a lot to help bring even awareness to the, she started the whole anti-litter campaign with us. She was one of the first people on board, and I wrote that legislation years ago. But I do want to say that your whole team is just, they're just really great in that department. I think if they had more resources, and they would do so much more. But I did notice also the position for Constituent Services Coordinator transferred from, from City Planning. Could you explain what their responsibilities? It's, I mean, it seems kind of dry that somebody's going to take the calls for DPW. Is that what they're going to do?
That person, you know, that person was already coordinating city cuts, and they were coordinating snow angels. And so, you know, we felt in working with the administration, the Budget Office, and City Planning, that really, some of those things, where they take those calls and they do a lot of those coordination, that will continue here. But it also creates this opportunity to work with some of our other constituent volunteer efforts as well, where we can really kind of coordinate this activity, whether it's in, you know, with some of our litter collection and cleanup activities. So really, it's kind of aligning that resource with more of what we do.
Okay. And then, just to, we'll know what's going on with the city cut crews. We were talking about increasing them, and they're the crew that will go onto private property and cut the grass and the weeds. and cut the grass and the weeds and, and board up the property. Um, and I know we talked about increasing them because we had such a backlog of calls for, for that service to be done across Pittsburgh. Uh, do you have any update on that?
I'm going to ask Marcel. I know she's been working with um, Giselle and kind of getting up to speed with that. Marcel, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
Hi, good morning. Um, yes, so as you know, that program was cut this year because of uh, obviously but we plan on implementing it again next year. So we're getting a list of um, contractors prepared uh, for next year, for, yeah, obviously coming up in the spring of uh, twenty twenty-two. And just so you know, um, I, I just kind of want to go back a little bit and let you know that uh, both Chris and Missy report to me. Um, they're both at the same level. So um, they're, they're not um, over each other.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that she's valued, um, that they're both valued, but that she's valued as somebody who started that program and uh, has done an amazing job.
And as you know, we've had some publicity recently about uh, illegal dumping. Uh, Missy was very instrumental in helping us with that. So her safety.
She's really good at that stuff. I mean, I never saw anybody get so excited about litter, but she is, she's really good about, but I and I also know that um, she's a woman in a predominantly male department and, and as you are. And so I'd like to make sure that um, she's just as I want, I'd want you to be. And so I just, I'm, I'm just curi-, I just would like to see that, that um, effort grow. But I'm just curious if, you know, we, we have a lot of problems with demo and getting the demo contracts. And do we ever do it in-house? Uh, I think we did when I was first here that it was done in, in-house. Some of the demos were in-house and I think it was under DPW. Um, and I'm thinking that if we had that here, it would be less costly and more readily available for the community. So we need to have a house or property demolished. Do we have any interest in looking into that? Any idea if uh, you know, what that cost would be for us to have something like that?
Uh, no, that's not something that I've yet contemplated. And certainly it's something where I would want to coordinate very closely with um, the Department of Permits, Licenses and Inspections on that. Just from the safety aspect, I mean, so much of that is kind of circumstantial in terms of, you know, what you're walking into where a property needs to be demolished, how close it is to another property. I mean, there's a load of factors that we would want to consider so that if we were going to take on that activity in-house, um, that we would do it safely. Um, and safely for the public and also safely for our workforce. So it's something that I would want to talk with them um, in depth about. It's certainly something we can explore.
I'd like to see us look into that, um, not just the demo, but even the whole coordination of services between renovating homes, demoing homes, helping people get into homeowners. I'd just like to see us do a better um, effort in terms of housing in general, um, and all the collective efforts. Uh, working for the betterment of the city. That's all. But I do want to thank you for all the work. I want to thank the whole department. Our Fifth Division is amazing. Everybody knows they're amazing. Uh, there's some guys there that would like to be considered performance positions. We've talked about that before. Um, but I do want to thank them overall because I think that they do an amazing job for a huge district. They cover my district and Councilman Colquitt Hills District. And um, I think mine is the largest district in terms of mileage, geographic mileage. So if they're covering that and your district um, and beyond, I just, I think that they do an amazing job and I want to acknowledge um, the, the crews at the Fifth Division. So thank you all very much for all the work you do.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I guess I, well, let the record show, we were joined by Councilwoman Deb Gross. And she also continues her excellent attendance throughout the budget hearings. Um, and um, and I guess uh, we'll go to either, um, let's go to Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I just want to take a second here before I answer any questions to um, uh, to compliment the Director for everything that we work on together. Um, do a great job on taking care of the, the lar-, you know, the larger uh, services that we provide to the public, but um, there's a lot of, you know, they may be little, little small projects, for instance. Um, you know, fixing up a memorial, getting, getting the um, the bricklayers to uh, or the mason, the mason people to um, you know, fix up a memorial. It means, you know, the world to the community. So I really appreciate everything you do um, to make those, those uh, those improvements. So I just want to ask a general question first, so I can get my bearings here. What, like you oversee park maintenance, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Director Bannock, why, like, I don't see a sheet for that.
We're going to be speaking about parks this afternoon because a lot of that's going to be wrapped up in the Parks Tax.
So what we typically will go over is now on parks, we're, we're going to go over all that in the Parks Trust Fund?
Between the Parks Trust Fund and parks specifically. I've asked the uh, the Director to be available this afternoon for that. It does
We'll see you again.
Yeah, it doesn't preclude you from uh, asking those, asking a question.
Okay, I just want to know because I was, all right, well, I'll save some of those part questions for later. Um, so there, I'm, I continue to see and, you know, forgive us if you don't see this on your end, Director. Because I'm looking at sheets that the uh, Director Urbannick um, provides for us that he initially went over, but you know, I see like a decrease of five in Bureau of Operations. Only an increase of one, decrease of one in Bureau of Facilities. I'm just wondering, I thought we had like a, just recently, like a big, a big push to hire.
We did. So when we did the amended budget in the middle of the year, um, that created those positions and that funding became available in August. Um, and so that hiring process happened. So this twenty twenty-two budget highlights that, you know, that that Bill Urbannick has prepared for you all. I kind of already kind of incorporated that, those changes into. So when you see some of those decrease in five, I want to also point out that some of that is um, positions that were both transferred to the Parks Tax and also re-titled. Um, and some of it's just shifting things around. Um, and so really I don't see it as a, I, although we see like, might be looking at it as a decrease, it's really you might see those increases elsewhere or in the Parks Tax itself.
Okay. So basically, we would have seen that increase whenever we reopen the budget in the back. Okay, I just want to make that clarification. All right. Um, because I believe, huh? The President, she wants me to wrap it up a little bit sooner. All right. Um, let me get my thought back here. All right, so hmm, let me go to this, uh, we recently all got an email asking about um, maintaining sidewalks and, and bike lanes and, and uh, you know, other options for mobility other than vehicle traffic. I just want to ask that question here on, because last year I saw, you know, a lot of posts, once it snowed, there were complaints about, you know, city sidewalks are still covered or, you know, bicycle lane is still covered. And I just wanted to give um, an opportunity to talk through, um, you know, those, those issues. Do you have any comment about, about that?
Um, I mean, certainly, I mean, I think the one thing that we need to be aware of there is that, you know, in, in a lot of cases, we do actually have the equipment. Um, what I've yet to see or yet to have incorporated into our plan and we're continuing to work with mobility and infrastructure and IP on this. Um, is just the classification and the help of prioritizing how that work needs to be accomplished. Um, that's really um, you know, where we are in that process. It's certainly something that we're aware of. It's certainly something that we're hoping to activate this year. I've cer-, I've received the same numerous emails from everyone. So we are, we are working through that now. Do I need additional equipment? I don't yet know. I need to get into the details and see exactly. And that's where we need a little bit of more data. Um, and a little bit more responsiveness from ours um, on that, on that front. But um, I feel like it's a place where we can get
Okay, yeah, it sounds like a sticky uh, the bridge sidewalks and also the, the protected bike lanes. So do we have the, like, uh, I guess it's a, I've seen the county's equipment on their bridges and it's like a big brush. They just kind of
Oh, we have that. We, it, we have, we have that in a lot of places. We have that piece of equipment with attachments. Um, that we utilize on our routes that we already have established that are steps, bridges and sidewalks that the city maintains. So um, you know, it's kind of working through the prioritization of it that I think will be the, the next critical step.
Okay, and then we, we have a piece of equipment to get into like a, a protected bike lane?
Yes, we, we, we have some, some pieces of equipment that can help us do that, yes.
Okay. Um, see, the only other, I have a lot of questions about a, a, a new facility that we're looking to build. Um, but I will, uh, I think we're going to work through that. I have a lot of community input on that.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, well, uh, thank you, Director, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, yeah, a lot of moving parts with public works, you know, whether it's building new, you know, everything that goes with it. So um, I guess uh, Councilwoman Strasburger, do you have questions for, for the Director?
You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and thank you to um, Acting Director Hornstein. Um, Deputy Director Newman and everyone from, from Department of Public Works for being here today. You know, when people think about um, just the city running, you know, oh, they picked up our, our refuse, or they picked up our recycling, or they swept the, you know, the path in the park, or they built this. That's, that's the hardworking people in your department. I mean, they're just, there's, there's so much that you do and there's so much that encompasses, encompassed by Department of Public Works. I just want to give a big thank you to you and um, your hardworking team for all that you do. I unfortunately had to step out to attend a different hearing. Um, uh, so I missed a lot of your presentation and be happy to catch up more afterwards as well, but um, kind of two, two smaller points, which I know is not going to be the bulk of what you're focusing on and that's okay, but just wanted to use this opportunity to bring it up. One, um, I guess small, but, but important nonetheless. Uh, one is, you know, I know as we see and we have a lot of different departments focused on this, as we see um, climate change, increasing the severity of storms, rainfall, right? We have PWUSA thinking about this. We have um, uh, we have our depart-, our Office of Sustainability and Resilience thinking about this. And, you know, I'm sure you're thinking about this, right? I, we saw record uh, numbers of trees falling down because of severe storms that which took everyone off of what they were normally doing in normal services and um, all hands on deck to um, to remove the dangerous fallen trees, to um, get the electricity lines back up. One of my constituents had their home crushed by a large tree. I mean, it's just, it's taken an incredible amount of time away from other projects in years past. I think we're still catching up on the, on the amount of money spent on landslides, which I know is both domie and maybe some um, public works as well. And um, you know, a part of that is also just making sure that with new catch basins that PWUSA is installing, that we're cleaning the tops of them adequately so that in large storm events, people, people's cars aren't floating away because of flooding events. So I guess, can you speak a little bit to what you're thinking about in terms of continuing to keep pace with the pace of um, climate change and the climate adaptation you might need to be able to you know, um, increase the, the level of service in those regards? I know it kind of, it's, 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 it's a broad ranging set of priorities there, but have you been thinking about that in your, in your department at all?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I think there's, we definitely have been and we do, uh, you know, broach those topics with um, you know, the sustainability resiliency team as well as just the Department of City Planning in general or, and, and um, the uh, PWUSA. Um, and what I, what I really think is, is it's kind of a, it's kind of a three, I think it's a threefold approach for us. One is, um, you know, just anything that we can do to improve coordination and data sharing between ourselves and our partner organizations like PWUSA in terms of, you know, those maintenance activities. You know, how do we step in and help um, when someone else can? And how can somebody else step in and help when, when we can? Um, and so we meet regularly with them. We, we broach those topics. Some of that's going to be um, sharing data. Some of that's just kind of getting it into the regular workflow. I think that's, that's part of it. Um, I think part of it is responsiveness, um, and developing that capability in staff. One of the things I was hugely proud of, as you mentioned, you know, the summer storms, we had those um, large tree falls. Um, you know, our response to that initial event was just unbelievable from my perspective. Um, it's one of the things that I was proud of. Uh, but what it made me realize is, is that, you know, we can always do um, a little bit better. And, you know, we have worked and partnered with public safety to just um, you know, have that kind of emergency response protocol. Chief Jones has kind of led those classes for us in developing that capability within our leadership. So we're thankful to public safety. We're thankful for the Bureau of Fire for kind of, you know, sharing their knowledge base with us. Um, and I think that's going to continue to be important, right? Where we, where we can utilize technology to help us coordinate better. Um, where we can develop that skill set um, within the staff that come up and want to improve, that, you know, want to advance in their careers. And we can keep that as a point of emphasis. And I think a third piece is, um, you know, being smart um, as much as we can on infrastructure, um, whether that's we're coordinating with PWUSA on um, stormwater improvements, whether it be bio retention areas, MS four. Um, so it's kind of a threefold impact. Uh, I know there's a lot of interest in, you know, some of the watersheds in the city, Four Mile Run being one of those, uh, Sawmill Run being another one. Or there's, there's a tremendous amount of community interest and input. Um, so we want to be active partners in that kind of infrastructure discussion. You're on mute, Councilperson.
Sorry, I'm on mute. If it would be okay, Mr. Chair, if I could turn this back over to another council member and then perhaps ask a couple more questions. I need to um, take care of something just for a moment, but if I could, could, could join again in a second and uh, continue asking questions after the next council member. I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. I, I believe we only have one more online and that would be uh, Councilwoman Gross. Sure. And uh, take it away, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, everybody for being here and of course for all that you do. Um, there's, as we've all been saying, there's so many different parts of residents' lives that you touch. Um, I've got a list of things in front of me and I'm not, you know, fear over. Um, even though uh, it was separated out, you know, from those here, when we really look at budget impacts. Um, most of the budget around parks is actually DPW budget. So, you know, both you've got a large capital budget for parks and you've got the staffing for parks maintenance. Um, and every year we kind of have to refresh ourselves and the public about this, that parks and recs still is mostly the personnel that maybe are outwardly facing. It's the person who checks your pool tag, the person who tells you, you know, rents you your ice skates. Um, the person that is at, working at the senior center if you visit, whereas um, GPW is all of parks maintenance and infrastructure. So um, I'm not, I'm not going to wait probably, but I'll start with the, the areas that other members have talked about. Um, I'm really happy to see a few extra positions in forestry. Um, I think this is a good follow-up to Councilwoman Strasburger's comment. I have some constituents who've been waiting a very, very long time for maintenance on their historic, mature, beautiful, large street trees that are healthy, but really need some maintenance because they drop very large limbs, right? But we don't want to lose the tree. Um, but can you speak a little bit about those changes? The, the changes in the budget and how it might impact that service?
Oh, absolutely. I think it will have a tremendous impact on those, on those services. Um, you know, some of that's equipment related. So we're working on um, you know, augmenting and modernizing that equipment too. But, you know, the additional positions, if it just became abundantly clear as I worked with our city forest, Lisa Choffey, um, you know, earlier in the year that we just you know, earlier in the year that we just, you know, quite simply put, we just didn't have enough of the tree printer position, um, to really get a handle on, on the maintenance. You know, they do a tremendous amount of work and they're, they're assisted by all of our other divisions as well. You know, the, the urban street canopy isn't just a, you know, it's not just one division that's taking care of it. It takes, it takes numerous resources to help administer that. She has, you know, great public partners, partnerships that she works with as well. Um, I'm just continually amazed by that, but it, it really does have a basic, a basic impact because as you mentioned, um, you know, those, that maintenance is critical to the health of that tree. Um, and they're beautiful and they add character and such huge environmental benefits to the city. So in discussing with their, like that, that two pole, that two-person increase, you know, that's more than a 10% increase in her staff level that provides that service. So that's actually like, that's actually like a really, that's actually like a really big impact.
So 10%, um, we're gonna just say hypothetically that could mean instead of waiting, you know, 10 weeks, you might be, wait nine weeks for service.
Eight, eight, eight weeks, but that's still, um, that's still an improvement, but it also means that in those, most of those disruptions that we have that impact us are, are events like the, um, you know, large scale storm that drops that, that requires their services and emergency situations everywhere. And that becomes the challenge of the coordination of it.
I think interrupted the, we still have using third party people as well.
Yes, we are. When, when it's beyond our capability, we're still, we are still doing that. Yes.
So I mean, I'm in favor of having even more of it done in-house. So, um, again, we're also supportive and enthusiastic about tree planting and certainly I've participated in those and been advocating for those on both on-street and off-street. We did a lot of tree planting for our parks, um, this year that were requested by especially people interested in permaculture and edible, um, fruits and berries and things, but very, I'm very fortunate to represent neighborhoods that have streets that have big mature trees. And so, uh, I think I will, would hear it, I will hear it from the neighbor in Highland Park who lives near Fulton Elementary and is very concerned about the maintenance on the tree right near school bus stops and where children are walking to and from school. So, um, I, I, we've got that 311 request, it's longstanding. And so we'll, we'll keep nudging and prodding to make sure that there's adequate maintenance on trees, especially when there's high traffic pedestrian by box and especially kids underneath those, those trees that need maintenance. But yeah, it, the more we, we, we should be planting more and more trees and that is better for stormwater, better for our landslide. But we'll need more and more maintenance as well. And so I'm in favor of this increase in the forestry budget and, and I would be in favor of even greater increase. I would be remiss if I didn't mention my enthusiasm for the composting project that is happening with city planning, getting the 90,000 budget. And I bring it up every single year and have worked with your staff. Thank you very much on getting some drop-off sites and some, um, additional composting at Community Gardens in my district this year. I've been pushing for that for a while. Again, we'd like to see that increase. I have additional sites. And I think we can scale up and I'm really excited to, that you're going to be having that conversation. Um, and I'm excited to have that conversation with tree planting as well. Um, so, uh, I, you probably heard me mention with the Equipment Using Authority that I was happy to see electric recycling trucks. And ask haulers or waste haulers and I was really asking about the electric garbage trucks for, for waste hauling. And, uh, again, I don't want to have to, our environmental services employees to have to put up with their current waste haulers even one more day of their lives. But, um, I'm more in favor of that some cities are going towards the electric vehicles rather than that compressed natural gas. Um, we see cities turning away from fossil fuels at every opportunity that they have. This is an opportunity where the city turns towards fossil fuels and I, I voted against it and I think they should be turning, um, away from fossil fuel sources. Again, sticking a little more with the core services and not for parks, I wanted to ask about, um, the budgeting for city steps. I know there's budget in place for McCambers, but we haven't seen that project start and it's really, I think it's in engineering. Um, and so I, I, I have to bring it up because it's been many years that waiting for repair of the Camber steps, which is, um, going from like close to where Stanton and the Palace converge, um, but connects on that, uh, Port Authority bus stop and Community Gateway and Art Project. Um, and so that is on your to-do list for 2022. I'm very much hoping.
Well, like, let's say in the city steps, you know, our construction division coordinates very closely with mobility and infrastructure, but when it reaches that kind of engineering portion of it, you know, we rely on mobility and infrastructure, um, that, because that kind of is in their professional expertise set. So. But we coordinate, we coordinate with them very closely on step improvements. Um, and we try to do everything we can within Public Works, um, and working with, with mobility and infrastructure to, you know, if we can avoid the engineering or if we can just keep it going with some basic repairs, whatever we can do, we, we do try to do it, but ultimately, unfortunately, there are some city steps that it just, they reach that can, level of condition that, um, it requires that engineering change.
I am really grateful to Carpentry for really pinch hitting on some sections of steps. Um, and they were wonderful. And, um, even though it's not the most permanent solution, it was great to not have to wait for
Yes. Yeah.
So I'm really in favor of that too. And so the Adelphi steps specifically and part of the 57th Street steps, it was really fantastic to be able to get some repairs out, but all pushed dummy for, for more, um, permanent infrastructure there. I've gotten a lot of talk lately about, um, the best front yard retention. We've been through this in the years past. It's one of those jurisdictional issues on the 40th Street Bridge. So we know that there was a Millville resident who herself cleaned up tons of litter and glass from the sidewalks and bike bins on the 40th Street Bridge. It's a jurisdictional issue. Pretty sure it's the county bridge. Sometimes I forget if it's PennDOT or county. Oh, it's PennDOT. And, um, so, but we kind of, um, were advocating for greater participation. I'm pretty sure at some point our DPW was kind of going halfway to add, so I'd love to circle back with you about that because it's a frequent, new traveled route. And it gets this kind of lost in the jurisdictional boundary issue. Um, and so we'd love to circle back around there. I'm sure Councilman Wilson also kind of got into the conversation recently as well. So we'd love to just, um, follow up with you on that. Back to, back to the budget and the, what can you tell us about your staffing and capital budget for ball fields? Um, I've robust Little Leagues and are grateful every day to all of the volunteers who spend their time and energy and effort organizing Little League teams, sometimes for decades personally. But we, we have a constant battle with the, the conditions of our ball fields. They're always flooding. And we haven't had real permanent solutions. So Hess Ball Field is still having problems and Totally Ball Field still has, has had some, some, um, maintenance improvements. But there's still some landline issues there. So what do you see for 2022?
Well, I see more. I mean, I see us, you know, slowly being able to do more of that good maintenance. So some of the localized drainage things that you mentioned on ball fields, um, you know, that might require a more engineered hand. I have to work with those crews on that. Um, you know, we try, again, we try everything that we can before we have to go to engineering because that becomes very disruptive. And, um, you know, can also pose some different challenges. So, you know, we're getting, it's, we've got pieces of equipment that help us, a laser grader, um, and we're developing that staff capability in-house, between our construction division and our parts maintenance crews. Um, so they work together on that. Um, all throughout the season. So I'm hopeful we can get more of that good maintenance. Um, and address some of these, uh, conditional issues that have been kind of, um, and that really is probably more of as much of Parks Tax conversation as it is on that. Now, you know, we also augment, we're also augmenting some of our, um, project management staff. So some of those bigger things that you might see um, in other districts that help improve the quality of play for ball fields, the ball field lighting, um, that's really where that staff kind of steps in. Um, and assists. And if we need like additional engineering or additional coordination, that's where that happens too. So we are trying to make those improvements, you know, on the fringes as well as, um, where appropriate, like larger ones.
Thank you. So just as a recap, and maybe if Mr. Schultz still on the line, since I missed the beginning and I am scrolling through Mr. Schultz's notes, but your DPW budget is 63, 63 and a half million dollars. And so I just want to give people a sense of scale because, um, certainly they, you know, the pension, the Parks Trust Fund and we talk a lot about it, but it's only $10 million. And, um, and that's, that was operating budget. So 63 and a half million dollars is operating budget for DPW. And which is, and it isn't just parks, we have environmental services and roads and things. And then what is the capital budget for DPW exclusive of Parks Trust Funds? I'm scrolling and trying to find that, but I'm not sure if I see that. Mike, if you're still there, feel free to chime in. What's the operating budget?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gross, uh, you speaking, you speaking? Director Urbainic?
Mike, or Bill, did you give my question?
Yeah, okay. As to Mr. Urbainic.
I can't hear anybody.
Are you, um, are you referring to the capital budget in regards to DPW?
What is DPW's capital budget exclusive of the Parks Tax?
Exclusive of the, uh, Parks function?
Not Parks Tax capital.
The capital is going to be $8 million total, uh, 2.8 in bond, 600,000 in CDBG funds and, uh, 4.6 million in other. And that's mostly, uh, going to be in the facilities improvement section of the, uh, the capital budget.
I see 2022 DPW capital budget, now that I've opened your spreadsheet finally, as like 13 million alone. And I see 2022 other capital projects and deliverables at a separate column is 21 million for a total of 35 million. Did I get that right?
I believe so. Uh, Mr. Strellick, you're on the line still?
So it looks to me like DPW capital project for 2022, just 2022 are at 35 million. But there's, and none of that includes Parks Tax.
That's correct. A lot of it does include the, um, American Rescue Plan funding.
Right.
That's what you're looking at.
Right, right. Okay. So I just wanted to kind of recap at a high level because Parks Tax is a really legitimate area of conversation and it concerns a lot of, of citizens. And I think it's great that we be very clear about what funded, what is being funded by the Parks Tax. But, um, I just had a, that the, um, what was the total operating budget for DPW I just talked about?
Sixty.
Can't keep every, I wish I had pieces of paper because I can't keep looking and opening things on my screen and keeping them.
Total operating budget for all the bureaus is 63,500,000.
63 million in operating for DPW for all the divisions, right? And that's facilities and that's roads and that's environmental services. And then another 35 and a half million for capital projects. So it's nearly a hundred million dollars of operating in capital for DPW. And then there's going to also be a 9.5 million dollars in the Parks Trust Fund. So I just wanted to give the public a sense of scale. That, uh, those dollars are welcome and, and important and additive, but about 10% increase. And we'll be splitting them between operating and capital. Um, and they will, they will help us get um, but I just wanted to get this and discover that it isn't the all of what DPW does, nor is it all of the capital fund. So I, I'll let, I'll let us get back to Councilwoman Strasburger. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Um, Councilwoman Strasburger, are you ready to continue?
Yes. Thank you for bludgeoning and I appreciate you, uh, coming back to me. I, I think my next few questions are real quick. Just first was a response or a reaction to, the, the question I heard, the answer to the question I had before, which is, you know, I, I agree. I mean, the crews were incredible in responding to the, the down trees this, the summer and, um, you know, the response to many other issues. I know, Director Hornstein, you, you sent out special crews to clear the catch basins when we were worried about more storms coming during storm season in the spring and, you know, uh, being, um, responsive is, is, was, you know, I think a highlight of this year and to the extent that we can be even more proactive, which I know you also mentioned, that's kind of what I was getting at as well. So, I know you're thinking about that as well. Just wanted to sort of reiterate my, my desire to see that too. Um, the only other, uh, topic I wanted to cover was we have many neighborhoods who have received the free blue recycling bins and I wanted to hear how that was going. Um, if you had any statistics, statistics about whether that has increased recycling rates. And, um, you know, I know that we have another grant to be able to distribute even more bins to all neighborhoods, but wanted to hear a little bit more about that.
Right. So I'll, I'll give a brief, um, discussion on that blue bin then. So we've got some more grant funding, you know, well over half a million dollars of grant funding and some other assistance from the recycling partnership. So we were going to phases two and three of five phases of rolling out the recycling bins. And really what we've seen in, at the end state is, with the blue, for those folks that have received the blue, but you may have missed this earlier, but, we've got about an average increase in 11 pounds of per, um, of recyclable per household, per collection. So we're seeing it just a tremendous uptick in the use of these and what we collect. Think about that 11 pounds per week per household. That, that's a lot of material. Um, it's all being diverted away from the landfill. It's all being recycled. You know, we know that we've, had some 311s and some constituent concerns on it. We've resolved almost a thousand of those concerns with direct phone calls and follow-up. So, I mean, we're really excited about where we are and I think it's only, it, it, it's only going to really improve.
That's great. That's great to hear. I know our office received a few, you know, some people didn't need them. We actually played matchmaker to, you know, this one person had too many, not, someone, someone had, uh, not enough and we were able to sort of just redistribute them. And I know that that wasn't something that the city was prepared to do or some people wanted wheels on them. That's just, you know, we weren't able to do that with the money that we had, I understand, but overall I'm glad to hear that it's been, um, it's resulted in such a, an increase. And I, I wonder if you have in your mind a threshold that we have to hit to be able to get to, uh, weekly recycling pickup rather than bi-weekly? Is there a certain amount of, of success rate that you have to see in recycling to get to a point where we're actually then picking up weekly?
Uh, I mean, it's much, it's, there's certainly that success rate, but I think it's also comes down to issues of logistics, right? You know, we need to be to make that type of change, which I'd love to see. Um, you know, we need to have changes in our downstream coordination of transfer station, um, where those things are taken to. You know, that will require additional personnel to make that service request. So, um, you know, certainly would love to see us get to that point. I haven't identified a I haven't identified a number or a volume of increase yet that would necessitate that, that weekly, the change to weekly, but would certainly something that we're looking at.
So it would be driven in part by success rates or the need, but also that would drive then the conversation to start the next step of, okay, how do we get past the logistics downstream with the facility that's accepting it, but also our own labor, our own budget, you know, how we allocate that, I understand. So, you know, love to do anything that I can on council's end to help to, you know, work through some of those, troubleshoot some of those issues when we get to that point and we have blue bins in all neighborhoods. I understand from talking to an expert in the field who does not work for the city, but worked in the industry for many years, that, you know, part of the reason other, other municipalities don't accept glass anymore in their recycling collection is because the, they're serviced by private haulers and it's just incredibly difficult to recycle glass. And you almost have to keep it separate. And one suggestion that was made was outfitting our recycling trucks with almost like a sidecar just for glass. So you put the recycling in the big bin and then there's this almost like a sidecar, a side compartment just for the glass where we would then have, you know, individuals separate out their glass from, and go from single stream to dual stream. Have you heard anything about that? Does that seem ring true for you? And, you know, do you know if that's possible or would, would we need all new vehicles to make that happen? To actually successfully be able to, to deal with the glass, you know, breaking and contaminating the other recyclables, that sort of thing?
Doesn't lead into Marcel here, because we were having a sort of a parallel discussion the other day regarding that. So Marcel, can you speak to, you know, some of the contemplations and thoughts we're having around the vehicles and that type of, that type of infrastructure?
Yes. So we, we have been discussing it. We don't have any final decisions on it. It would be best to have a separate glass containers and we are doing that. We've seen that when we are, where we are posting containers for bars and for residents to drop off their glass, it's really working well. We want to include more of those throughout the, throughout the city. But we actually did start that conversation about having residential glass picked up, but we don't have a final decision on that yet.
Okay. Thank you. Understood.
Yeah. I mean, yeah. I'm sorry. We also wanted to bring in composting too. So we started those conversations again. We're working with some nonprofits and colleges and local universities to figure out what the best means of collecting that as well. Again, we, we haven't made any final decisions. You will definitely be included in that process as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then just one request. I know that the twice a year green waste pickup is negotiated with our, with our staff at the beginning of the year. If there's any way to move back the fall time one to first week, second week of December. I know that just seeing, you know, the neighborhoods I represent, it breaks my heart to see bags and bags of leaves being put out after the last collection of the year and they're just going into the landfill. So if there's any way to either negotiate to pickups in the fall or move it back to, you know, first, second week of December and people can put out their 20 bags of leaves at that point. You know, of course, I would love to see it happen more frequently, but I know that's not necessarily a possibility. So that's my one request there. But other than that, you know, thank you to you and your, your entire team for all you're doing. Again, appreciate it. Appreciate being here today.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strasburger. And, you know, as I said to you before, Director, I don't really have any questions for you. We meet on a regular basis and I always appreciate you, you know, keeping me in tune to everything that we're doing. I just had a few comments. Councilwoman Gross remarked about forestry. I would love to see a more robust forestry, you know, I talk to Lisa often. We have trees all over the place, I feel, and need tending to. So I would like to see that going forward. And as Councilwoman Strasburger said, simple things as cleaning the catch basins make a remarkable difference. I will actually stop and clean them myself sometimes just because, you know, they clog up quickly after a rain. You know, they get clogged up. I always, you know, I always relate it to, it's like cleaning your gutters. Once your gutters get stuffed up, boom, it overflows and does damage. And, you know, that's where flooding comes in. But two, two other things, of course, you know, Director, the Public Works Division, you know, I get frustrated. I know many times with the progress there. I know it's not of your doing. You know, we could blame the supply chains. There's a lot of different moving parts there. But I am, and I hope you're very confident that by next winter, this will be fully up and running and operated for, for the fourth district. Are you, you confident in that, Director?
Doing everything in my power to make sure that that is the reality. Already coordinated with the Budget Office on, you know, some of my concerns around supply chain and contracting, just to make sure that we're absolutely meeting that deadline.
I think it's essential to have that up and running. I kind of promised the neighborhood I would have it up and running before this winter, but that's come and gone and I've talked to many of those people and, you know, told them of the issues. The other major project in my district is the Moore Pool, you know, I know that also, you know, hindered by supply chains and, you know, contractor issues. But that I hope is up and running by summer. Where are we on that? Can you give me a definite?
Absolutely. Be open up. No question it'll be open up for summer.
Okay. Those two major projects are the ones that are most top of my mind. So one other thing I will tell you that I am thrilled about, and I just got the news yesterday, the salt boxes. Thank you. Okay. You know, I argue for more, more trucks, more vehicles, more, you know, labors in my district because in the winter, you know, the hills that I have, I feel it just demands it. And, and I hope whether we gotta negotiate with our other council members, you know, I need a full force up there this winter to get us through. But knowing that we're going to have these salt boxes and the salt boxes in the strategic places, the strategic hills, just to give the people the opportunity to take it in their own hands if they need to get to work and spread salt down the street, you know, with a shovel, you know, is, is really great. I, I really appreciate you following up on that. I think, you know, at least psychologically, it's going to make a huge difference. But I hope we have the resources up there. And I know there's been trouble with the purchasing of the new vehicles and things of that nature. So I hope this is the last winter that we struggle. I hope we don't struggle this winter actually, but, but that's, has yet to be seen. I'm very nervous, but at the same time, I'm very confident in you and your team. You've been very responsive, you know, and honest with me about whether it's the Public Works Division, whether it's Moore Pool. You know, I appreciate your candor in that. So anything else from any other council members or, or Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Krogel. I'll head and step away and I'm wondering if we didn't remember to say thank you for the support of DPW for the City Farms projects. It was a lot of community engagement. And so, and I think my office who really worked super closely with the neighbors in each of the city parks. And just a reminder, since it's, these were community gardens on city property, we were able to use city funds to help purchase everything from soil to fencing to seedlings to most recently trees. Everybody wanted edible trees. So our trees that provide fruits and nuts and we planted pawpaws. And I think we did persimmon this year, but we did, I think, some hazelnut trees as well, even a shaggar hickory tree, which is important for wildlife and I'm told will be a great addition to stormwater retention on sea pills in Polish Hill. So again, especially forestry who really showed up and helped us and their great partnership with Free Pittsburgh and Providing Trees. It was, it really was something positive. It was really needed in, you know, the neighborhoods during this very long year and a half now, almost two years of COVID. It's once again, a kind of positive outdoor engagement that people can do. And also improving city property in volunteer efforts. And I didn't hear anyone ask, and I know we've kind of wrapped up almost, but I didn't hear anyone ask about pools except for Moore Pool. And thank you, Councilwoman Krogel, for reminding me. We were so disappointed last year to not have opened, was it 18 pools? And I know that that is dear to your heart, also Director Hornstein, that you've been telling us that these pools need capital improvement. So I'll ask at the parks about the staffing issues, but do you want to say a few words about pool capital projects?
Yeah, I do actually. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about that. You know, I think as, as many of you have, certainly Council President, you know, Councilwoman Gross, you know, Councilperson Krogel have all expressed to me at some point in time, you know, the, the Councilman Wilson, the importance of pools to like, to the communities that they serve and how, you know, this is viewed as, you know, critical community infrastructure, particularly in the summer. What I know right now, and we continue to get more data from PWSA that's kind of helping inform this position is, but what necessitated the emergency repairs of Moore Pool were, you know, I dug through the water bills in 2019 and discovered that, because it's in the PA American Service Area, I discovered that we filled up Moore Pool seven times in the month of August, which doesn't sound right. And so I went to investigate the condition with our staff and I noticed concrete heaving and some other concerns. And I looked at, you know, some of the injury complaints and I realized that we had a really big, huge issue that had to be addressed. And my concern is, the only reason that I really found that is because I looked at the water usage, because that pool was metered on the PA American system at that time. And so I was able to identify this as a place where both we could have some, you know, some savings or a capital project that more or less would pay for itself with reduced water usage over the years. And then talking with the staff, we started to realize that this, this condition, while maybe not as extreme as a, as a Moore Pool, it's likely to be existing elsewhere. And so one of the projects that I proposed that should be in the Parks Tax is that we do just a condition assessment of all our city pools. You know, we're going to look at those things like condition of concrete, condition of piping, as well as, you know, some of those kind of community activity improvements if we can. And we can begin to modernize this infrastructure because it's been, it's been kept together by the diligence of our staff, but literally with bubble gum and duct tape. And we just, we've reached the point in reviewing that with a Moore Pool and, you know, the challenges and the, and the work we're doing with the Oliver Bath House and with this restoration, that this is an asset class that really hasn't seen significant investment in some time. And so I thought the best prudent course of action is to just take a step back, do a condition inventory and, you know, kind of see where we are and then work with council and our communities to figure out what that, what those investments look like in the future.
Thank you. Yeah, you kind of start somewhere, right? So let's just figure out exactly, we need to figure out the scale of the, of the problem so we can have that public conversation. And I mean, and a note, not to go down a rabbit hole here, but we are now paying PWSA for the water as well. So are all the pools metered?
Yes.
That's a good start. That's why we can definitely throw in some of your clues. And I'll remember from the DPWSA Cooperative Agreement that we also are responsible for the sewers in our parks where we weren't before, if I'm not mistaken. And so I would recommend that we camera the sewer lines. Every home owner out there knows that sewer lines are a really big issue and they're very old. And it's always better to know what is going on with sewer lines there. So even though it's not related to water use at the pools, it is related to, I think, some of our ball field conditions and some of our other parks conditions where we have doggy ground. Very possible that we, we have our own kind of broken water infrastructure, but we should be camera.
Very possible.
Yeah. So I'll leave it there, but I'm, I'm glad that we, we brought it up and we can talk about it again at the, at the parks conversation if it's appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I know.
Sure. And thank you, Councilwoman Gross. And, you know, I just wanted to add to what she had said about city farms. I'm glad you brought that up, you know. Councilwoman Gross and I started on this venture a couple of years ago and I've never seen more excitement, usefulness, such a good thing to be a part of. And Councilwoman, it's been a real delight working with you, you know, through this. I see her neighborhood, she has a bunch of community, you know, people who are just really engaged and they want to grow things. And now she's supplying the, you know, the soil and the, you know, anything that they want, trees, you name it. As Councilwoman Gross has many smaller sites, I have one large site that I've been working on, Director. I think you and I have talked about this. Public Works will come in, you know, handy, not only in Councilwoman Gross's district for all these things, but for this master plan that we have this farm site. I have already been talking to the next administration about this. I look forward to talking to you, Director, and me and you and Councilwoman Gross talking about, you know, moving forward with this. And Councilwoman Strasburger, I've mentioned it to you a thousand times, I know. I am going to get you out to that field, our little field of dreams, we'll call it. And, you know, I hope we can proceed with this. I think you'll see the engagement that we have, the support that we have for it is just across the board. And we'll go over that more when we get a chance to sit down and, and talk about it. So, okay. I just have one announcement to make. 1:30 today, there will be the Parks Tax Trust Fund chaired by Councilman Burgess. And I just need a motion to recess and we'll see you back here 1:30.
Motion to recess.
Okay.
Thank you all.